Hey, let's call the meeting to order, please. Natalie, may we have a roll call?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Bard.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Lord.
Here.
Commissioner Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Alternate Wendy Nuland.
Alternate Mike Lewis.
Very good. Any amendments to the agenda? One of these days, we're gonna amend the agenda. Twelve years, I don't think we've amended. Just, we're gonna. I should have asked you as a question, I usually do. Is there, are there any amendments to the agenda, staff? No amendments to the agenda? Yeah, you also know I don't like surprises, so that would be, I'd rather we discuss that in advance if we are. Administration, administrated determination of ultimate voting, it's a moot point. We have all five hands on deck here. Public comment, this is the time for public to address the planning commission on anything that is not on the agenda. Natalie, has anybody signed up for general public comment? Okay, we'll close general public comment. Consent agenda consists solely of approval of the August 1st, 2023 meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes, commissioners? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the consent agenda is approved. Business items, we have three items, 6A, Mile High Car Wash Site Plan, Chad.
Thank you, chairperson, and thank you, commissioners. Let me get this to pull up real quick. As you mentioned, item 6A is a site plan application for Mile High Express Car Wash. The proposal includes a 4,578 square foot car wash at 6770 Innovate Place in Timneth Ranch. The owner is Timneth Ranch LLC and the applicant is TB Group.
Excuse me. Excuse me, we got. All your, are all your screens on? Okay, we got two that are not on there showing the, the town of Timneth logo, but not.
Not your screen.
Not the screen, can you?
Not that we can't see.
Can you see that well enough, the two of you, if not?
I've got it pretty well memorized.
Yeah, I'm memory, okay.
And I pulled up the PDF.
Okay. Can you see mine?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just that they're not working.
All right, go ahead.
Got it. Sorry about that.
Good. I just was worried about all the ships at sea not being able to see this, but obviously they can.
All right, again, just for anyone listening in, and for the commissioners as well, we are the development site plan process, basically towards the end here, with an approval that would go forward to building permit for construction. The property is lot four of the Timneth Ranch fifth filing replat number two, consisting of 50,224 square feet or 1.153 acres. It is zoned commercial mixed use with a PD overlay, and the use of a car wash is permitted with conditions in the Harmony Corridor. One of those conditions is that it may not front Harmony Road. The use will not abut Harmony Road, as you see here, based on the lot. Therefore, this requirement is being met. Again, this is just a, the minor subdivision plat kind of showing how the lot is working with those surrounding it, and there is a private loop drive surrounding the property as well. So the site will be accessed along the east property line here at the private drive to maximize the stacking space requirement for this use. Per the Timneth Land Use Code, the parking requirement for a car wash is determined by the development plan. In this case, the maximum number of employees at one time is determined to be four. Therefore, the applicant has proposed five standard parking spaces and one ADA space with 18 vacuum spaces, including one electric vehicle charging station. The required EV charging station will be a minimum of a level two adhering to the section 5.8.18 of the land use code. It is also providing a bike rack, meeting the town's requirement for one for every 20 parking spaces. The site is providing 20% open space, meeting the requirement in the Harmony Corridor standard, with 7.9 being usable open space. The site includes a public gathering space within the northwest portion of the site, as seen here, which will be furnished with a pergola shade structure and benches. The area also includes a turf field with a walkway provided connection to the lots to the west. The site was reviewed against section 5.10 of the Harmony Corridor Standards, the land use code. The site plan meets all the architectural landscaping and site requirements for those standards. Here's the elevations provided within this plan. It is meeting or working with the lots that are already gone through the process for site plan, being the gas station and the liquor store. The plan was also reviewed by the Harmony Design Review Committee, whom provided a favorable recommendation of approval. This proposal is not requesting any waivers to the land use code, and since this is just a site plan for one building, you as the planning commission will be the approving body for this plan. In conclusion, the site plan application has been reviewed against the land use code, development standards, design guidelines, and review criteria. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the Mile High Site Plan. The applicant team is available in the cloud if you have any questions for them specifically. Otherwise, staff is here to answer the questions.
What, who is, did you mention who the applicant, the owner is?
Yeah, so the, the owner is Timneth Ranch LLC, represented by Warren Turner, and then TB Group, represented by Courtney Stazowitz, is in the cloud right now.
Okay, good.
From TB Group.
All right, good, yeah, I was gonna ask you if they were, it was unusual they weren't represented, but they are here. And they are online, they're up there. Who is it, who is it?
I'm here. Courtney's here.
Okay, good. All right, good. This being a site plan, there is no public comment on this, so we bring it up here to the commissioners. Commissioners, questions for Courtney and the rest of the team, anybody else that's on there? Wendy.
Turn up. So Chad, can you, can you hear me? Can you point out where the sidewalks are going to the dog wash? There was a lot of talk about how there was good pedestrian availability to the dog park. I just, is it the dashed lines there? All the sidewalks they were talking about? I think it was on the side.
Yeah, so there is a sidewalk that goes around the entire perimeter of the site. And then there is also a connection that was made to the west, creating a little more access from there. There is a dog wash within the northeast portion of the site, so that would be access most likely from the eastern portion of the boundary line.
Anything else, Wendy? Okay, Tom, Tom?
Jeremy. My recollection from the other car wash, these, I guess my only concern would be this is interior facing with significant amount of homes going in. There's no flashing bright neons like other car washes you might see on crossroads, so on and so forth. Is that, is that not allowed? Or do they have that very bright appearance with this, or is it gonna be a dim setting? What does that look like?
Yeah, so their site lighting has met our requirements as far as the boundary line and those foot candles. What they proposed that I've seen has not shown anything as far as bright lighting or anything to promote this use. Maybe someone from the applicant team could clarify that.
Courtney, can you clarify that question regarding the light also, but I would interject something. If you want to go back to the original drawing, this is screened a good bit from the, in the housing development to the south, to the south, because there's office buildings across Innovate Way.
Yep, I was just.
Seven buildings, right, we already approved.
That's where the, okay.
Yeah, just to the south was the office medical park that
Gotcha.
was multi, multi-building, so there would be screening to those.
Yeah, but your question about lighting is a good one. So Courtney, could you, up there in this cloud, could you please address issues with the lighting?
Sure, yeah, happy to. My understanding is that this car wash is not going to have all those flashing colorful lights that change. I think it's gonna be pretty basic, especially based on how the architectural elevations look. I don't think it would really provide for a lot of opportunity for something like that as it stands. Ideally, I, it seems like that's not really allowed in the code anyway, so I don't believe that that was something that they had thought about doing. This seems to be a very low-key, not in-your-face sort of a car wash. So, yeah, I don't believe that we'll have those flashing lights, and same thing goes for signage. I know that we've already started talking about getting a sign out there, and I know that we won't have some sort of big, bold neon bright sign going in.
Thank you. Chad, do you mind, so that everybody justify the showers we took to come here? Everybody gets their money's worth, at least. Could you just briefly talk about lighting? Refresh our memory on what the standards are as it relates to something like this? What do we look for, what do we don't, what do we not allow? You touched on some of it, but what else can you tell us?
Yeah, so per our code, we do have a requirement for foot candles to diminish. We have just actually revised that to be 10 feet off of the property line, to be zero. So the way they design the lights within the site, it needs to be in such way that there would be no light illuminating past 10 feet from the property line. That's one of the ways, or code sections that we have for lighting. Kevin may be able to speak to this a little more, but I do not believe flashing lights, anything like that would be permitted in our code. Would just be the standard lighting that would be for just visibility and yeah, just within the site.
Okay, how about a just, maybe somebody was gonna ask this, I'm on a roll here, so hours, what are the hours allowed? Somebody else was gonna ask that, but.
I have to verify, I don't believe we have a condition for that for this use, but I do think that they may have proposed that within the site plan to have the hours of operation. Courtney, I'm not sure if you're aware of what they are proposing for that.
Give me just a second, I was gonna double check. I'm not sure, I think Ron's on. Ron, do you happen to know?
Yeah, you know, I think it was 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I'm not positive, but that's, I remember.
Yeah, staff, between staff and applicant, I mean, it seems like. Can we rely on that? And I don't know that closing at 7:00 PM is necessarily, but Kevin, what can you tell us about?
There's not a, there's not a requirement for hours of operation, and this isn't a conditional use, so it's not something that we can add a condition on to that.
So this could be 24/7?
It could be, but I doubt that they would do it 24/7. A car wash like this typically has to be manned for somebody to start the conveyor and things like that, so they wouldn't have somebody that would be working out there 24/7. It's not one of those drive-up, do-it-yourself kind of car washes.
The, the hours are listed on the site plan as being 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
They are, okay, so we may rely on that, thanks.
Yeah, there's a photograph, a photogrammetry plan on page 22 or 47 that shows all the lighting, including streetlights and so forth, so that, all that details.
Okay, good. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, thanks, Tom. Other questions? Jeremy, you?
Good.
Okay, on the lighting, any other questions? We said, Tom, not you're, okay, all right. With that, with no other questions, staff, anything else you want to add? Chad, anything? Okay, all right, do I need a motion then on item, business item 6A, the Mile High Car Wash Site Plan?
Motion to approve item 6A, Mile High Car Wash Site Plan.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Courtney, welcome to, welcome to Timneth.
Thank you, we appreciate you guys.
Item 6B, vacation of a portion of the Pudah River Trail easement created at the river bend, in the river bend subdivision. There's an opportunity for a public hearing on this, and item 6C, Kevin?
Thank you, chairperson. So this is vacation of a portion of the Pudah River Trail easement. The owner is Timneth Lands LLC and River Bend Car Wash, represented tonight by Alex Schuman. So just a quick little summary, so this is, what's highlighted in blue is the property of the River Bend subdivision. In 2015, River Bend Ventures platted the River Bend subdivision, and with that plating, they created an easement along their, what was at the time, south property line, and then also kind of west property line. They platted an easement for the purposes of constructing the Pudah River Trail. When the Timneth Trail Apartments, they bought their Phase Two, which was the old McBride property, kind of the house that you see there in the middle of the graphic. When they bought that and redeveloped that property, they actually realigned the existing Pudah River Trail from going through their apartment project to be along the old alignment of County Road 3F. And that is where the new Pudah River Trail alignment actually goes down, and that construct, that completed in 2022, don't know if a lot of you have been over there to been on it or seen it. So with that new alignment of the Pudah River Trail, this easement for the old alignment is not necessarily needed anymore for the purposes of the Pudah River Trail. But the trail itself will continue to exist in some fashion as a pedestrian connectivity between the Pudah River Trail and then to future commercial development within the River Bend subdivision, and then ultimately the apartments as well, as they will keep the trail within their property as well. This easement vacation has been reviewed against criteria, and the criteria within the code that it meets is that it's no longer necessary for the public use and convenience. And just as I mentioned there, with the new alignment of the Pudah River Trail that we have in a much safer and better location, the easement isn't necessarily needed anymore for, for that purpose. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Pretty straightforward, but there is an opportunity for public hearing. Natalie, anybody signed up for public, okay, we open and now we close the public hearing on item 6B. Commissioners, questions for staff on item 6B? It is straightforward. Okay. All right, with that, do I have a motion on item 6B, vacation of a portion of the Pudah River Trail easement created in the River Bend subdivision?
I move to approve item 6B.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, Ed, carry, motion carries. On a 5-0 vote. Item 6C, River Bend Subdivision, second filing, minor subdivision. Kevin?
Thank you, chairperson. So along with that, that vacation comes the next filing for the River Bend subdivision. This is for what is known as Track B. So actually, you can go back one step. So this is where, what would be in the, the process, this property actually went through the major subdivision process back to, back in 2015, and now we are just following up with a minor subdivision after the fact to create some additional commercial lots. So as mentioned before, this is generally located west of the roundabout here at Signal Tree, north of the Timneth Trail Apartments, south of Harmony Road. This application is for six lots that are intended to be for future commercial development. These lots will range from just over an acre to just over four acres in size. They are also going to be, along with this plat, they are plating an access easement for the internal road that will connect from Harmony Road to the north to the Signal Tree Roundabout. This filing falls within the Harmony Corridor, and it was reviewed against the Harmony Corridor Design Criteria set forth in section 510. And the attached Development Structure Plan has been approved by the Design Review Committee. With this filing, they are intending to provide development plaza split, spaces within lots 14 and 15, when those parcels develop in the future, as depicted in that Development Structure Plan. And then when each lot along Harmony Road develops, they will also be doing a continuation of the 10-foot Harmony Road Trail. Staff has reviewed this application against the land use code and found it to be in compliance with the land use code and the criteria set forth. With that, we have Alex Schuman here for any questions, if you need, or be happy to answer any for you as well.
I might, I wanna first, nobody signed up for public comment on this either, so we close, open and. Yeah, do we have to, it's a good question, you have to check online, would we know if anybody?
No, we don't, we don't do online public comments.
Okay, we. Okay, anything to trip me up here? Yeah, one of those days, thank you. So I will mention in a refer back, refer back to, or that's not redundant, to the issue when Alex came before us, we had the issue of the parking variance on the office buildings, which included at that time a proposal for perhaps two restaurants. I would let you know, commissioners, when it did come before council, if you recall, we had somewhat less than a formal acknowledgement that, that Alex would, right, Alex would somehow find a way to accommodate overflow parking if it became an issue. Council was able to, I would say more, more, they were able to formalize this with some kind of document, correct, Alex? And if you want to come up and just acknowledge you had no problem with what the town attorney had proposed. Turn the microphone on if you would. So commissioners, you.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. So if you recall that, commissioners, and so Alex, you would.
That, that is correct.
Yeah, and you did formalize that to council satisfaction, which, which more formally formalized, if you will, our concern about the parking.
Yes, yeah, and, you know, with approval of the minor, we are working on a full site plan for the entire property with staff currently. That, that, what was, that evening that I noted, yeah, which is indicated here as lot 11, will be a entire parking lot.
Okay, so that somewhat, somewhat belies the, the concern we had, and that, and I think council, safe to say staff, council agreed that it could be a problem, but using the means that were open to them, not open to us, they were able to more, to formalize it, and now we move on and it ceases to be an issue.
Correct, yeah, yeah, move forward on phase two of the project.
So with that, questions for Mr. Schuman from the commissioners?
I guess I have a question. Lots 14 and 15 are kind of irregularly shaped, and there's a lot of topography over there. I guess I don't understand, what's the plan for those, those parcels? I guess I don't understand, what's the plan for those, those parcels?
Yeah, we are looking on the, call it the river edge of the property, I guess that we're calling it here, that it'd be primarily restaurants, entertainment uses.
Okay, so commercial is the planned use?
That is correct.
Okay. And the building on the corner there by Harmony, is that to stay or go, or?
Yeah, the existing house there will, yeah, will be demoed once the full plan is put into place.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
This is the house, the green painted, wood-sided?
Correct, the one that is on, yeah, located on the northwest corner of the property.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions? Lisa, microphone.
There you go. There we go. The structure that is there on the entryway that is just that covering, does that stay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that will, that is, will be over the roadway that we've got here plotted. So that'll be the, I guess, second, well, I guess really the, the right in, right out off of Harmony coming into the project.
Is that just designed as a feature? I mean...
Yes.
Okay. In the owners, it says car wash. Is there an intended use of another car wash in this property?
There is not, no.
Okay.
That was an old plan that got scratched.
Okay, I was just curious, we probably don't need three car washes.
No, we, three restaurants would be good.
Three restaurants would be good.
No, yeah, that turned into a parking lot, like we said.
Okay. Just curious if we were looking at a whole nother car wash, so...
It's a good catch, thank you. Okay. Did you catch that too?
Yeah, she asked that, good. Then Tom asked the question I did about the regular lots.
You're good, okay. Jeremy, Wendy, anybody?
Glad to see that it's gonna be commercial, I think that's a good use.
Yeah. Is the house currently empty, or is it?
It is, yes.
Okay, okay. But it's not the one that's on the hill that is setting, like overlooking the river just beyond that?
That's the one I was talking about.
Yeah, I think we're talking the same.
It is out on the corner.
Yes.
Okay. But it is, it's empty and been vacant?
Yeah, it's being used as, yes, storage at the moment.
Okay, wow. We don't have any questions about trees, there's lots of trees around there.
Yeah, they gonna save the trees?
Yes, yeah, whichever ones we can, yes.
Great.
You want to take that a little further? You really, you are able to save a lot of the trees, I'm sure that...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's one of the selling points, yeah, for the site, that obviously looking west there, yeah, with the trees that are running through the river there, I mean, it's creating a nice little, little backdrop there, so.
Good.
There's plenty of them that are reasonably healthy with pruning and things like that, they should be fine.
Be a great place for a fancy restaurant.
We're working on it.
That resonates, okay. And no other questions, commissioners? Eric, anything? Okay, with that, do I have a motion on business item 6C, Riverbend Subdivision, second filing, minor subdivision?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Appreciate your support.
Very good. Reports, I have one item, commissioners, before I get to it, and anybody have anything to report? So I, I would report, I'd like to report, we did have the grand opening. I knew you, you are very sharp tonight, Kevin. We did have the grand opening of the, of the park. It was a gala affair, and I, it really was. Callie Hoppy and her Overlord Productions did a fantastic job. We had a little tournament, little pickleball tournament as well. And I just wanted to report for the record, and everybody out there, thousands of people listening in, watching this, the final count on finishing in the money, we had one town councilman who finished second place. We had two planning commissioners. Marty Jost, Lisa Bard, finishing first and third respectively. I wouldn't call them necessarily ringers.
Since when is superior skill a ringer?
I would say more coaching period besides the day before. And the final count, staff, staff finishing in the money, zero. For the, for the record, for the record, everybody listening out there, there was no money involved. That was an expression. Very good. All right, so that's, it was, it was a very nice affair, and I would add in all seriousness, it was one of those things this little town does very, very well. And not that we don't do a lot of things well, but this was, I certainly had the best time of anybody there, I think. So I thank, I thank everybody who participated. With that, anything else, staff? No, engineering, anything? Natalie? Nothing, okay. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thank you.